Good afternoon, welcome to the Scottsdale Planning Commission Public Hearing. The city encourages your interest and participation in the public hearing process. The Planning Commission is an advisory board to the City Council on land use and zoning matters. The meeting agenda items are development applications that require public hearings. The Planning Commission considers their request and makes a recommendation for approval or denial to the City Council. The City Council makes the final decision for or against approval of the application. The agenda consists of the roll call, minutes approval of the prior meeting, continuances are for items that will not be heard tonight, withdrawals are for items that have been withdrawn from any further consideration, consent agenda is for items not likely to require a presentation or discussion, all items on the consent agenda may be voted on together. Any commissioner may move any item from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. Regular agenda is where each item includes a presentation and recommendation by staff, a presentation by the applicant, and public testimony after the applicant has had the opportunity to respond to the public testimony. The Planning Commission then discusses the case and votes. Non-action is for items for discussion, no vote will be made by the Planning Commission. Citizens wishing to speak on any agenda item may fill out a blue speaker card, or if not willing to speak, may fill out a yellow comment card and turn it in at the staff table, right over where the gentleman's raising his hand, there it is, before the agenda item will be discussed. The chairman will call you by name when it is your turn to speak. When called, come to the podium, state your name and address, and then begin speaking. Groups wishing to speak should elect a spokesperson to represent the views of the group. To facilitate the meeting, your comments will be limited to three minutes for individual speakers, one additional minute for each additional individual present at the meeting who has contributed their time to a representative speaker up to a total of 10 minutes. Please format your speech to be accommodated within the applicable timeframe given. For convenience in timing presentations, a light system is installed on the podium. The lights will be green for two minutes and yellow for one minute. Please conclude your comments when the red light appears. Thank you for your interest and time, and now we will begin the meeting with a roll call.
Chair Alessio.
Here.
Vice Chair Smith.
Present.
Commissioner Bolinger.
Here.
Commissioner Higgs.
Present.
Commissioner Fauci.
Present.
Commissioner Kusch.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Ask for a motion to approve the June 26, 2019 Planning Commission meeting minutes including the study session. We have a motion by Commissioner Kusch, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Serena, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We'll move to our regular agenda item. Item number two on the agenda night is 3UP 2019 JoJo Coffee House. Mr. Barnes.
Chair Alessio, members of the Planning Commission, I am Jeff Barnes with the city's planning department, and presenting to you 3UP 2019, which is JoJo Coffee House's conditional use permit application for live entertainment. The JoJo Coffee House is a tenant space in the Second Street Hub multi-tenant development at the southwest corner of Second Street and Scottsdale Road identified here on the large-scale aerial map. Zoomed in a bit, the red highlighted space is generally representing their tenant space at the south end of that development. The aerial photo is a bit older than the developed condition out there, and there is a north building as well across the drive aisle from that that makes up the rest of the site. Site carries the C3DO zoning, and getting back to that constructed condition, this is the approved Development Review Board site plan, just to give you a better idea than that aerial did of how that site is laid out. So it's two multi-tenant buildings with drive aisle and parking in between them, as well as parking off of the alley to the west. This is representative floor plan for the JoJo Coffee House tenant space highlighted. Central north in the middle of the space is the identified performance area where they are proposing to have coffee house style music performed for the, basically ancillary component to their general operations as a restaurant, and those performances they've identified may be acoustic but may also be amplified, and so the goal of their application is to be able to accommodate both through that process. As I've alluded to but identified here, the request before you today is a request for conditional use permit for live entertainment for the JoJo Coffee House tenant space within the Second Street Hub development with the C3DO zoning at this location. As part of the analysis of the conditional use permit application, there are a few general conditional use permit criterias that have been evaluated and accounted for regarding potential impacts on surrounding businesses, surrounding area, and those sorts of effects, as well as 12 specific live entertainment use permit criteria that have been evaluated as part of this application. And with that analysis, staff's presenting before you a recommendation of approval, subject to the stipulations in the staff report for this application, seeing that there does not appear to be a negative impact as a result of what they're asking to do. And that wraps up staff's report. If you've got any questions specifically, I'm happy to address them.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Barnes. Any of the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Barnes? Commissioner Higgs?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. Is this coffee house completely enclosed, or is there indoor-outdoor seating? Will people be coming in and out?
Chair Alessio, Commissioner Higgs, this is indoor as their primary. They do have a small covered walk space out in front, but the identified operations are to be contained within the building with no outdoor amplification or anything that would...
Okay. Thank you.
Any other commissioners with any comments or questions?
I was just wondering, is there going to be a stipulation not allowing karaoke? Because they shouldn't allow karaoke.
Chair Alessio, Commissioner Kusch, I believe we have not identified that, but the applicant can certainly regulate what types of performances they allow.
Any other questions, Commissioner Kusch? Nope? Okay, good. Thank you, Mr. Barnes.
He has more of a statement.
Clearly. Now we'll have a presentation by the applicant. If you could state your name and address for the record, appreciate it.
I'm Mike Melton, owner of JoJo Coffee House. And I'm not exactly sure what you're wanting for me to provide right now.
You're welcome to make any type of a presentation on your behalf. Staff does a presentation, and the applicant's welcome to make a presentation. If you feel good with what staff's presentation was, then that's great.
Yeah, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Very good.
Just playing live coffee house music.
Very good. Any questions by any of the commissioners for the applicant?
Should I ask one about karaoke?
Commissioner Kusch does not have any questions, so thank you very much.
All right, that was easy. Thank you.
We do not have any requests for any public comments, so with that, I'll ask for a motion by the commissioners.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Kusch.
I'd like to move to make a recommendation to the City Council for approval of Case 3UP 2019, per the staff recommended stipulations, based upon the finding that the conditional use permit criteria have been met.
Very good. We have a motion by Commissioner Kusch, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Commissioner Higgs, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Congratulations, motion passes seven to zero. We'll move on to item number three on our agenda, 17UP 2012, number four, bottled blonde Scottsdale rooftop bar. Mr. Bloomberg.
Thank you, Chair Alessio. Commissioner is Greg Bloomberg, here to give you a brief presentation on the bottled blonde application, 17UP 2004. Site is located off Indian Plaza, south of Camelback Road, on the north side of Indian Plaza. This is the Maya Club here, W Hotel here. Eventually, we hope, there will be a new hotel here on the Don and Charlie's site, that's in the works. Close-up aerial of the location, the roof deck essentially would be, I believe, just in this area here, and, yeah, okay. And the property is zone C2, P3, DO. P3 is just a parking overlay. So here's just a quick look at the site plan. Not much is changing on the site plan at all, with the exception of an external staircase. They need two means of ingress and egress to the roof deck. So there's an internal staircase, and then there's going to be an external staircase. A portion of that external staircase will encroach into the city's right-of-way, so they will have to do a private improvements in the right-of-way agreement for that, and they are trying, or they are planning on maintaining 14-foot clear sidewalk width from the curb to the stairwell. Floor plan of the roof deck, bar area here, some games here, a turf area here for gathering, and of course, some tables and chairs. And one of the things that they're providing, we heard it from some neighbors to the north in the single-family neighborhood, that there were concerns about noise, and one of the things that the applicant is proposing to help mitigate that is a wall, a very tall wall, as a matter of fact, an 18-foot wall here along the northern edge of that roof deck. The idea, of course, being to keep the noise in towards the district where all the activity is, instead of going off towards the single-family to the north. So some things for you to consider as you mull this over, there is an updated security, maintenance, and operation plan that was approved by the police department. As required by ordinance, they increased the parking demand for the establishment by 10 spaces, actually, based on the square footage of the deck. They've secured 12 remote parking spaces to accommodate the proposed roof deck. Those spaces are within 600 feet of the establishment as required by ordinance. We have, like I mentioned before, we have some public comment that we received from residents in the area expressing concerns about noise. Most of those comments were general in nature, but they were concerned that this operation was going to contribute more noise to the overall problem. And as I also mentioned, the 18-foot wall is proposed to limit noise trespass on the single-family to the north. But there's also a stipulation for the case, number 10, that restricts the hours of operation for the speakers to limit noise trespass on the multifamily residential to the south. And the primary reason for that is because the speakers are elevated, they're not down at street level. They're going to be elevated, so the sound is going to travel further, so we felt it was appropriate to have those speakers turned off by 10:00 PM, I think it was Sunday through Thursday, and then at 11:00 PM on Friday and Saturday. So that's what that stipulation would require. That completes my presentation. We're available for any questions you may have, and the applicant has their own presentation as well.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomberg. Any commissioners have any questions? Or, Mr. Bloomberg, Commissioner Kusch?
Just one question, are there any clubs in, we'll call this the club district, okay? Are there any clubs in the club district that have a restriction on what time they have to turn their speakers off? That you're aware of?
Chair Alessio, Commissioner Kusch, the closest one that I can think of is actually not in this area, it's the social tap.
That's a ways off.
It's a ways off. I can't think of anything in anywhere in this area where there's a stipulation like that.
And that was just something you guys thought was a good idea, based on some people's... We all know that there's a lot of noise coming from the club district, so was that kind of what you based your decision on, to set a restrictive date, time?
Chair Alessio and Commissioner Kusch, we've done it in the past, like I mentioned, with social tap. Social tap, obviously, is in a little more of an area where there's not residential nearby. I think the proximity of the residential being only 400 feet away in both directions, we felt it was an appropriate stipulation.
I've been a long-term person who's been, had problems with the sound issues down there, but I do have a problem, quite honestly, with treating someone differently than everyone else, that, you know, it should be a level playing ground and fair to everyone, so I'm just, for what it's worth.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Kusch, I think also, we're looking at this a little bit differently in terms of these newer proposals with the rooftop, second-floor patios being introduced now into downtown, so we're trying to be as consistent as possible with that effort.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Smith?
On that point, didn't we recently approve a rooftop deck for whiskey something or other, just down the street? I remember the case, wasted grain, or next wasted grain. I know for a fact we approved a rooftop deck.
Yes, Chair Alessio and Commissioner Kusch, that's the social tap, which is right across the street.
That is the social tap, okay. And that does have a 10:00 PM restriction?
I have to recall, I don't remember.
Because that's on Stetson, if I'm not mistaken, we're 50...
We did have, yes, we had a restriction on, actually, what we did with that one, I apologize, is we restricted the, we required them not to exceed 68 decibels within 100 feet of the establishment. That was a stipulation for that particular case. We did not restrict hours of operation for the speakers.
Okay.
Commissioner Smith, did you have a comment?
That was my clarifying question, because I reached out and asked that question, so I was confused as to what, if it was the decibel restriction, or if it was the time restriction for social tap, so I got it straightened out, thanks.
Good. Any other, Commissioner Serena?
Yeah, this, excuse me, this property is in the middle, basically sandwiched between the mint, which I think the same applicant owns, and then the W, one at surface ground level and one on a second floor, both of which, as far as I'm aware, play music until 2:00 AM when they shut down. So with this facing the opposite direction, and those both facing into neighborhoods at both a second level and ground level, why, just what's the thought process then to allow or recommend the mint and W to play music till 2:00? And what's the thought process now? How's it different now, when it's facing into the entertainment district versus the neighbors?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Serena, I think the attention to this one was that we have a new rooftop deck being proposed with a sound wall on the south, excuse, on the north side, and open air to the south. That does face the entertainment district, but it also faces an apartment building just south of the entertainment district. So there's a little bit of sensitivity that we thought was appropriate, and our recommendation to try to tone that down after late evening hours for the benefit of that multifamily residential project to the south. But as a community, we're kind of cutting our teeth on this in terms of trying to find and strike an appropriate balance, but that's the rationale.
Have you ever been in front of this establishment on Saturday night around 11:00 with High Life across the street and Alheffy on the corner?
Mr. Chairman, certainly both me and Mr. Bloomberg have, yes.
Because I think that you could turn, did you, who paid for the drinks? I think you could turn this music off, and you're not going to notice, the sound from those other clubs is so intense. I've said this before, I've had police officers tell me when side of their car with the windows rolled up, at that location, they can't hear their radio. So, you know, maybe, I mean, I see staff's point, I just kind of question whether or not really, there's any real benefit to this, to anybody, in restricting them like this.
Commissioner Smith, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just, well, just one other clarifying question. The stipulation that to turn off speakers is only for the second-floor rooftop, correct?
Chair Alessio and Commissioner Smith, that's correct. Existing speakers down on the patio can stay on till 2:00 AM one day.
And that, but that's, if I know the spot correctly, has kind of an open area, so up here turned off, but down here stays on?
That's correct.
Any other comments or questions before we hear from the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Bloomberg. Presentation by the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Benjamin Tate with Withy Morris, 2525 East Arizona, Bill Moore, Sir, on behalf of the applicant. And I am here as an advocate for the immutable truth that enjoyed on a rooftop beer simply tastes better. I won't belabor the point too much, because I think you're all relatively familiar with the facts at this point, as far as where bottled blonde is, the context in which it exists, and the ambient conditions in that area, which I heard some of the commissioners point out, as far as light and noise is concerned, until all these establishments close. So this shows the existing outdoor patio, which is covered there, and then the area on top, obviously, being where the proposed roof deck would go. This gives you a little bit better perspective of just a street-level image of what the patio looks like right now, and where the proposed roof deck will go. Here's just a colored version of the image that staff showed you earlier, that shows you where the bar is on the north side. Behind the bar there, to the north, is that sound wall. That sound wall is 18 feet tall to protect sound from encroaching too much to the neighborhood to the north, on the other side of Camelback Road. Some turf areas for games, and then speakers and television, and to the commission's point earlier with regard to, or I guess staff's concern about the projection of noise from an elevated position, the speakers up here will actually be angled down, and although sound is not perfectly directional, speakers and lights angled down will mitigate some of that concern. Here's just a head-on rendering of what that looks like, the two stairwells that staff noted on the exterior for ingress and egress. There won't be any internal ingress and egress, all the movement of patrons will be from these exterior staircases. Here's just a look facing from, for the east looking west, that gives you a little bit better condition, or idea of what that condition with the sound wall will look like. And I won't belabor the point on these criteria, I know that staff is recommending approval, and has found that we've met all of these elements, and so at this point, I'll just fast-forward through this animation as quickly as possible, and answer any questions you may have.
Any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Oh, Commissioner Kusch.
How do you feel about condition 10?
And that was actually, thank you for bringing that up. To the point that some of the commissioners have made, we feel that, given the efforts that we're already making to mitigate the light and sound up there, but on top of that, the ambient conditions that already exist, we feel that that stipulation is unnecessary, or at least that last sentence of that stipulation.
Also, point of clarification, because I've studied this a bit, the wall you're talking about behind the bar, if you could go back to that floor plan?
I'm going to do it this way, because that was an awful lot of scrolling. It doesn't look like I have a choice.
There, whoops, there you go, whoops.
That one?
Yeah, now, and then go to the next one. I don't think that's 18 feet, I think you're talking 18 feet from ground level. In other words, I don't think you're talking 18 feet from the roof of the first floor up, are you?
No, that's correct.
Because you said it's an 18-foot wall behind the bar.
I missed one.
Yeah, if you go down to the ground, yeah, okay. But it looks like it's about at least 10 feet, right?
Correct.
Do you happen to know the wattage of the sound system on the deck?
Yeah, so the speaker system that's going to be on that rooftop deck is only 600 watts, which is substantially lower than any of the...
I've been told the wattage across the street at Hi-Fi, is that what it's called?
Yes.
Is 9,000?
I don't have that number up yet.
Are you sure you're going to be able to compete?
I believe that that is an accurate assessment.
The battle of the speakers?
We will lose that battle handily.
Yeah, okay. I've been wondering for some time why anyone needs 9,000 watts of, I mean, that's pretty substantial.
I guess, have it and need it, and need it and not have it?
Yeah, well, I understand. All right, so you're saying yours is under 800, did you say?
600.
600, all right, thank you, that's all I have.
Commissioner Bolinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Explain to me the secure parking clause, exactly where that is, and how that's done for the benefit of everybody.
So the, this is an off-site parking arrangement that the applicant has made with a nearby site that is within 600 feet, as which is required by the ordinance, that they have those spaces available to them in order to meet this parking requirement. That's a contract that they have with an off-site parking location.
That's a lease, a permanent arrangement in perpetuity? I can answer that, Commissioner, or Chair Alessio, Commissioner Bolinger, they have to do what's called an assurance for remote parking, that we are a party to, and the agreement is temporary, it's basically for five years, but it can be renewed.
Just a question, what happens then?
Well, I mean, they're going to need to maintain that assurance, obviously, as long as they're operating that roof deck, so I mean, after five years, we will tell them they need to renew it.
I just want to make, put that on the table so everybody understands. We're talking about parking downtown, and it's kind of a relevant thing. Thank you. Any other comments, questions from any of the commissioners? We don't have any, we do not have any public testimony. Thank you very much. Any other discussion on this case by any of the commissioners before we ask for a vote? Commissioner Serena?
Yeah, so, I mean, I think that, I think the feeling up here, for the most part, is the same, given the time of the speakers is the main issue, and, you know, you talk about the multifamily, I think this area is growing, there's some other multifamilies, some hotels, there are hospitality that are going in there. We don't have a guide, or bylaws, or any rule around the downtown, the entertainment district, that would give us some guidance long-term on speakers, how they face, how high, how high they go on the rooftops, anything like that, so we're kind of just spotting this thing as we go along, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Serena, I think, in the context of the conversation, I think that's correct.
Okay. Maybe that's something we could put, I think we have a couple of big things to bite off now with the parking, but as the entertainment district grows, I think Commissioner Fauci and I briefly mentioned, the hospitality, or the residential on the south side of this project, if I remember, I wasn't on the commission at the time, but there's a lot of discussion around that being so close to the entertainment district. I think part of the discussion at the time, or some of the people that were trying to get it developed, that these people would love to be that close to the entertainment district. So now, they had to know this would evolve, there's going to be, you know, more, more bars, rooftop decks, so I think we need to have that conversation, and maybe, as we continue to find ways to improve the downtown with parking, maybe we bring it back at some point to talk about how we can create some rules or guidelines long-term over how we deal with bars, how many bars, how the speakers are facing versus the neighbors to the north as this entire area continues to evolve. Because I think it is tough, the same applicant has a property right next door that faces the neighborhood, I mean, I'd actually agree with the other one that faces the neighborhood, but now you're asking him to limit his hours on one that doesn't even face the neighborhood, and then you have the W, which faces the neighborhood and goes till 2:00 in the morning, so I think it's a, it's a hard thing to kind of spot, spot develop, or spot use these type of projects.
Commissioner Kusch?
I agree with what Commissioner Serena said. At some point, we're going to really have to take a look at the club district. The club district, I think, is a good thing overall for the city. It's one more thing that Scottsdale can talk about, and everybody talks about it, and it has been, for the most part, a very good thing, but with it has come a lot of problems, crime, condition of the area, the sidewalks and all. There's someone in my office who did a stay vacation, staycation, they call it, at the W on the Fourth of July. He was actually mailed a letter from the hotel, warning him that he's probably not going to enjoy himself at that hotel. Imagine you own a hotel, and you have to warn people that the noise is going to upset you. I have it on very good authority that the flag of the W has actually talked about this, that maybe that's not something they want. So it is a problem. I've lived in Safari down the street, and I know for a fact of people who had to move because the noise was so bad, but I don't think you single out this gentleman, he's, these people, they're following the rules, once again, they're doing what the city's asking. I do think it's unfair to single them out for time restrictions when no one else has to do that. But I agree with you, I really do think at some point, we're going to have to kind of take a look at things in general. Everyone agrees that the sign, the code, the noise, or what do you call it, the sound code is not working, because it doesn't cover bass, and the bass is the problem. I live two blocks away, and at 1:00 in the morning, you put your hand on a window, and you feel your window vibrating, that's not, that's not the decibels, that's the bass. So it is something we're going to have to look at, but tonight's not tonight. This isn't the case.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner Kusch. Any other comments or questions? I did have one clarification, and I'd asked for the applicant to come back up for just a quick moment. Just to clarify, what you are requesting is that you're requesting the entire item number 10 to be removed, or just the last sentence of item number 10?
It's just that last sentence, Mr. Chair, that reflects the time stipulation during which the speakers would have to be turned off, but I think we're fine with the rest of that stip.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure, just in case, somebody wanted to make a motion that included that, that they understood what you were hoping for.
That's correct, and just for what it's worth, this applicant has expressed that they're willing, and in fact, interested in working with the other property owners... fact, interested in working with the other property owners in this area to really take a second look at noise in the area and working together to potentially bring it down.
Very good, thank you, appreciate that. With all that said, is there a motion for this item? Commissioner Bollinger?
I move to approve Case 17UP 2012, Number 4, move to make a recommendation to City Council for approval of the case per the staff recommendation stipulation based on the finding that conditional use permit criteria have been met.
The revision to stipulation Number 10 that was discussed.
So if I understand correctly, your motion is to include removing the last sentence of stipulation Number 10, which states, "All speakers on the roof deck shall be turned off by 10:00 p.m. Sunday through Thursday and 11:00 p.m. Friday and Saturday."
That's correct.
Just want to make sure Mr. Curtis and Legal got all that and...
Yes, we understand the motion, thank you.
Okay, very good. So we have a motion by Commissioner Bollinger, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Serena, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes six to one, Commissioner Kush dissenting. Very good. We will then move to our last item on the agenda, Item Number 4, 7ZN 2015, Number 2, Marquee. We do have one recusal. Commissioner Smith has already removed himself.
Good evening, Chair Alessio and members of the commission, and my name is Brian Cluff. I'm a planner with the city's current planning department, and this is Case 7ZN 2015, Number 2, The Marquee. And this is a zoning district map amendment request for a new mixed-use building with approximately 250,000 square feet of office and 21,000 square feet of retail in the downtown area. Here's a look at the subject site from the north looking south. You can see it's on Scottsdale Road, highlighted in yellow on the map here at Schuman Lane, and you can see the Galleria Corporate Center in the background for context. Here's a closer look at the site with the existing shopping center building on the site that's currently vacant and that's surface parking. And the specific request tonight is a recommendation to the City Council regarding a development plan with amended development standards for a zoning district map amendment from downtown downtown multiple use type 2, Plan Block Development Downtown Overlay, to downtown downtown multiple use type 3, Plan Block Development Downtown Overlay. And also with regard to the planning commission criteria for a PBD overlay district application. And for reference, there is an existing entitlement on the property from Case 7ZN 2015, a few years back, which approved a similar development on the property for an office building at a height of 90 feet. Here's the existing zoning, the downtown downtown multiple use type 2, and the proposed zoning, so the only change here is from the type 2 to the type 3 of the downtown, which would allow for the additional building height as proposed at 150 feet. Here's the site in the context of the Old Town Future Land Use Map identified within the downtown multiple use area. And then also the site in context of the downtown development types shown in type 3. And type 3 of the downtown area does allow for the highest scale and intensity of development in the downtown area. Here's the subject site in the context of the existing Galleria Building, so the focus of this application will be on the north side, shown here. So here's a zoomed-in look at the site plan slash landscape plan. The grayed-out areas here represent the building locations at grade, and then you can also see these black column locations identified through here. So on Schuman Lane, there at grade, there is a 20-foot setback provided, and on Scottsdale Road, a 40-foot setback provided at grade, which is consistent with the requirements of the downtown district. And then I'll also note, you see the column lines out here that extend beyond the building, so above, the second floor and above, the building is popping out into that setback. So they are requesting a reduction in the setback on Schuman Lane and Scottsdale Road for those pop-outs of the building, which will create a covered arcade over the sidewalk area there. And the ground floor adjacent to the streets will include retail spaces to activate the street frontage. And then also shown on this plan is the redesign of the Schuman Lane street section. So currently, there's angled parking spaces there. This plan shows a redesign of that to convert those to parallel spaces, pushing out the curb to the north on the south side of the street here, allowing for a larger building setback zone and more amenities. And this is consistent with what was approved by City Council in the previous zoning entitlements. And here's a section view of that cross-section, so you can see the travel lanes, the parallel spaces here, an area for landscaping, and then just under 12 feet of sidewalk area outside the column, and then approximately eight feet additional sidewalk inside the column adjacent to the building. Here's a rendering of the proposed building design, a view from the northwest, and you can note that, obviously, we're not talking about materials here, mainly just massing in the development standards, so as the design progresses, materials could change moving through. So you can see at the ground floor plane here, the pedestrian access or walkways that'll be adjacent to the retail spaces. And then from here up through to Level 7 are parking garages, parking levels that are, would be clad by perforated metal screening, and then from there up to the top are the, is the office space. And then the area on Scottsdale Road here would be a, potentially, an art element on the side of the building. And these are the proposed building elevations, so you can get a closer look at the proposed stepbacks that are proposed to be amended by the applicant with the application. So the blue dash line here indicates what the standard building stepback requirement would be in the downtown. So this is the Scottsdale Road frontage here, so you can see at grade, the 40-foot building setback provided, and then Level 2 and up, you can see where it starts to pop out into that area, and then at certain levels here, you step back 15 feet, and then at this level, steps back another eight feet, and then an additional step back at the top level there. And then looking at the east elevation, you can see the massing on Schuman compared to the ordinance requirements that are typical. And then this is the south elevation and the west elevation, which are similar from a different angle. And then I'll briefly go through the planning commission criteria for a Plan Block Development. The first one is that the proposed development supports the land use elements of the general plan and the downtown plan. So the general plan designates it as mixed-use neighborhoods, and the downtown plan is downtown multiple use, which we saw on the map previously. So the proposed Class A office and retail in a mixed-use format is consistent with these land use elements. The second criteria is criteria to add land uses to the existing allowances in the downtown. They're not proposing any additional land uses here, so this criteria is not applicable. And then the third criteria is that the development plan reflects noteworthy investments to provide public benefits in the area of the project. So here's a summary of the proposed public benefits. For the bonus floor area ratio that they're asking for, along with the building height, the bonus payment totals approximately $2.1 million that will be contributed, and this is the breakout of how those funds will be allocated. So the first two columns here are the actual improvements for Schuman Lane for that revised cross-section, and then the remainder, 1.7 million, would be an in-lu payment into the downtown special improvement trust fund for the city to use in the future for projects in the area. And then the project went before the Development Review Board for recommendation on June 20th, so I'm just going to briefly go through the staff's recommendation to the Development Review Board. We had presented options which suggested additional building setbacks, and, sorry, building stepbacks, not setbacks, to better align with the massing recommendations of the urban design and architectural guidelines. So I'm going to briefly go through what the staff recommendation was and what the result of that meeting was after discussion. So based on those guidelines, staff had recommended some additional building stepback for the upper levels along Schuman. So starting here, which I think is Level 8 or 9 of the building, would be an additional 33-foot stepback at that point, and these are measured from the curb line at Schuman, so it would be stepped back 33 feet from the curb, and then a 42-foot stepback for just the upper level here. And then this is the north elevation, so you can, you can see here the areas that would be stepped back, the 33 feet here, and then the 42 feet here. And then also, to take a look at Scottsdale Road, this red line here identifies a 15-foot offset from what the typical ordinance requirement would be, which is a standard exception that we have in the downtown district. So staff had recommended that they keep the building within that 15-foot encroachment area, so that would pull back a section of the building here that encroaches and then a couple points there. A second option that staff presented was an option with lesser setback, so this shows the Schuman, so it would only be a 33-foot setback from Schuman Lane for the upper two levels. So that's shown there. And then Scottsdale Road would be the same, with the exception of this pop-out here pulling that back to the 15 feet. And then the third option presented to the board would be just as proposed by the applicant, which is what you're seeing currently today. So that's the Schuman Lane and then the Scottsdale Road look again there. So after, after discussion, the Development Review Board recommended approval unanimously with this last option, which was the as proposed by the applicant. Public outreach to date, the applicant did have an open house, July 23, 2018. Applicant and city sent out notifications to a 750-foot radius of the site, along with our standard newspaper and site postings, internet subscriptions and social media. There hasn't been a whole lot of public comment received. There was a little bit received early on from a nearby property owner who owned an office building there. There's correspondence from him in your staff report, and then I believe we received today two other email correspondence with regard to the project, and that's all we've received to date. And that concludes staff's presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Any of the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Cluff? Commissioner Faqee?
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question, Mr. Cluff. Can you go back to the section you show along Schuman Lane where you showed the setback?
The street cross-section?
Yes, please. Yes, this, yeah, there's one after this one. Where is the right-of-way here? Where is the city property?
The right-of-way line, it comes right into here, almost.
So the building is almost at the right-of-way line?
Correct.
Okay. So, and when it come into this section here, and obviously, you know, I will talk more about the pedestrian connection, but how do you compare this section to what we have, like, currently at Scottsdale Quarter, for example? So you look into, you have some massing building, yeah, it'd go up to 90 feet, but sometimes you don't feel the height, right? But, I mean, how does this 26 feet here compare to what we have currently on Scottsdale Quarter? Do you know the answer?
Chair Alessio, Commissioner Faqee, are you talking about the frontage adjacent to Scottsdale Road or interior?
No, interior. I'm talking about the interior, so, I mean, kind of like private street we have over there.
Yeah, this would actually be very comparable to what's in Scottsdale Quarter. There are a lot of ranging sidewalk widths in there from, we try to keep it to at least eight feet where there's patios encroaching into the sidewalk at Scottsdale Quarter, but there's some areas that come out to closer to 15 to 20 feet. But I would say the condition that's shown here is pretty comparable to what's in Scottsdale Quarter.
Okay, so going back to this question where the property line is at the building, I've seen in the site plans, there is a lot of activity at the corners of the building, like table, you know, more connectivity. So those will be in the public area then, it's going to be in the city land, it seems like, if we're going to do this?
Yeah, Chair Alessio, Commissioner Faqee, there are stipulations in the staff report that talk about limitations for encroachments, specifically for patios. So they would be able to have patios in this area here, under the arcade, but they're stipulated to leave this area clear outside of the column.
Other question, if you go back to the $2.1 million, you know, chart? For, you know, obviously, this is, I mean, we are changing the zoning just to go from the 90 to 150, right? Now, when this was under the current zoning right now, under the 90 feet, was there a contribution of special improvement bonus already in place, or is this an additional contribution?
Chair Alessio, Commissioner Faqee, yes, there was a contribution that was required previously. So this, that's handled through a development agreement, so this new agreement would overwrite the existing development agreement, so the original amount would go away and would be replaced by this amount.
What was the original amount?
I believe it was right around 680, 680,000.
Okay. So there is about, almost like, I mean, $1.4 million additional here, 1.5 million?
Correct.
And the last question, for the $1.7 million here, the cash payment into downtown special, is this same fund that deals with public art, or is the public art a completely different cost for the applicant?
Commissioner Faqee, the public art is a different account, that's the downtown cultural improvement fund.
And do you guys have a budget, because you guys do a calculation for the public art as well, right?
Correct, though, they're also obligated for 1% of the project value to the, to the public art program.
And what is this estimated to, do you know?
I don't know that at this time, the applicant might have that information.
And last question was, does staff has like a overall pedestrian connectivity for this project? Do you guys have any map? I mean, I'm going to ask the applicant as well, but I'm wondering if staff have any kind of like master plan or any update because of this massive development here. Is there anything will change the pedestrian connectivity at this intersection, or?
Chair Alessio, Commissioner Faqee, the Old Town Plan does have a pedestrian connectivity and open space plan that identifies specific areas where we are looking for good pedestrian connectivity. Along Scottsdale Road and Schuman in this location is part of that plan, so the improvements that they're proposing on Scottsdale Road and Schuman are consistent with what's called for in the plan.
Okay, so whatever we have planned, I guess, will fit this project, right?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Serena?
Yeah, similar to Commissioner Faqee's questions, the pop-out on Scottsdale Road, how far does that go to the property line as well?
That also goes right to the property line. We're actually, they're stipulated for a right-of-way dedication on Scottsdale Road to bring that to a 50-foot wide half-street, and that comes right up to it, so there, there may actually be a small conflict there where that has to be pulled back slightly, so it's not in the right-of-way.
And also, it's my understanding, previously, a lot of these buildings with these long walls, like this one, how far is the Schuman Lane wall or the Schuman Lane building exposure? How long is that, from Scottsdale to the end of the building?
I don't recall off the top of my head.
Maybe the applicant can speak to it?
Around 400.
And isn't it standard here? I mean, I'm under the impression that previously, the city required breaks in the building every 300 feet, so why are we increasing this exception by 33% to the applicant without having a break in the building? Because as far as I can tell, there's no break.
Yeah, Chair Alessio and Commissioner Serena, that's a great question. The downtown ordinance does have a standard requirement that's actually for walls that are longer than 200 feet. So we do look to get the break in the massing in those lengths of 200 feet. So the applicant is proposing to amend that, so they can give some more explanation as to the intent behind that.
So before he speaks to the intent, typically, just so I have a better frame of reference, because I have the numbers wrong, it's 200, what is the city typically looking for to count as a break? What would be considered a break? Would it be the gap in the building at the water tower? Would it be, and give me an example of what a break would typically be that would be acceptable? acceptable?
Some form of break in the massing, where the face of the building pops back, maybe in the area of fifteen to twenty feet is what we'd be looking for, for, I don't know that there's a specified length, but just proportionate to the building to break up the mass.
Okay. I think that's it for now. I appreciate it.
Very good. Any other commissioners have comments or questions for staff? Very good. Thank you. Now, we have, I believe, we have a presentation by the applicant?
Mr. Chair, good evening. Jason Morris, on behalf of the applicant. Thank you, and thank you for the initial questions. I'll try and cover some of the initial questions that were asked by the commissioners in the context of the overall presentation, and also try and cover some of the issues raised by staff. This is, to some degree, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, this is a little bit of a redo. It's unusual that we're coming back so soon on a site that was just recently rezoned. Really, what's driving that is two factors. One, the city council changed the overlay for this area, as we'll get into that in a little bit more detail. But really, what's driving this is the fact that the city council, in their wisdom and looking at what the downtown core should look like, amended heights, amending this area to a hundred-and-fifty feet. Our previous approval was at ninety feet with six foot of overage, so we were just under a hundred feet total. And we're asking for the hundred-and-fifty feet at this point with this application. What that allows, is that allows a parking solution, and I know we're going to talk at parking, very likely, as part of this application, but that really allowed a parking solution to come above ground and be structured and wrapped as part of this building in a podium context, and then keep the square footage of the office, and play off of the success of the Galleria as a corporate center. So as we look at the overall increase in office space, it's going from roughly a hundred-and-ninety square feet, hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand square feet, to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet. So it's not a massive increase in the office, but it does make the building itself viable by having this additional height. It also, as we'll see from the application and the presentation, it keeps it consistent with other heights that are existing and proposed in this area. The site, as you're aware, is at Scottsdale and Schuman. What you can take away from this exhibit, as you look at the other sites around us, is there are existing height, either existing or proposed height in this area, and we're sort of in the bull's eye, or the circle of the doughnut, for the areas of height in this part of the type-three for the city. You know, eventually, I'll figure this out, Mr. Chair. There we go. This area in red, it reflects the type-three that is approved by city council, meaning the highest intensity of heights in this area. As we go a little bit further, we look at some of the building heights that surround us, to put into context what we are proposing, and why we're proposing it, and why staff is recommending support of that proposal, and why DRB also recommend it, recommended support. In addition to the type-three, it's also an area that includes downtown multiple use. So the downtown multiple use is the green area. As we look at what the documents say, and the direction we're given, downtown multiple use type should incorporate vertically mixed land uses, exactly as we're proposing. As we delve a little bit deeper into that, we see type-three development. In the definition of the type-three development, it talks about where the highest-scale type-three development should occur. And in this instance, it gives our intersection, east and west of the intersection of Scottsdale Road and Drinkwater Boulevard. So we are following what we believe is the blueprint for this area. The site itself is two-and-a-half acres. It is the same development concept, meaning the same footprint, by and large, as what was approved in 2016, the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet. It includes twenty-one-thousand square feet of ground-level retail. And I want to point that out, because actually, in this development scheme, because we're able to take that parking and put it in a structured concept, the retail at the ground level, the pedestrian experience, is actually much better. Because previously, we were forced to wrap the ground-level parking with retail, and it didn't give us the proper depths for good restaurant space and retail. So you'll see, it's a better experience. The development standards, we requesting amended development standards, and we did that last month in front of the DRB for our first public hearing. What we pointed out to the DRB is, we are requesting the same amended development standards that were approved in 2016. We are not asking for anything in addition, and this is what was already contemplated for the site largely because of how difficult this site is in its shape. We've already discussed the two-million-dollar in payments. I will point out, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, that does not include, as Commissioner Faqih mentioned, the additional money for the arts, which is a one percent on a fifty-million-dollar building, so we're talking about another five-hundred-thousand dollars on top of that. There is also an additional number for in-lu parking, for some street parking that is being altered. So there's a, and that's a roughly quarter of a million-dollar number. So those are all before the construction costs. As we look at the site, I alluded to this, it is a challenging site. It has an existing building on it, but it is a long and narrow parcel. When you're developing an office building, and again, the concept is to build off of the success of the office users who have come into the corporate center and now want to expand, or want to join the existing users in this area. In doing so, developing with that width has become a challenge, which is the reason we have asked for the amended development standards, and largely drives the design of the building. I noted that it has retail and restaurant at the ground level. This is an upgrade and an improvement over the original design, because we are able to have those depths at this level, and a better experience. The building itself, and we're showing it from the street view, if you were a pedestrian, this is not necessarily the view you will receive, because you're essentially getting maybe the first twenty, twenty-five feet of a building at street level as a pedestrian. But to give you a concept of the building itself, we wanted to show you, we have set this building back. We've set it back at the street level, and then above the street level at the midpoint, and at each third, it goes back a little bit further, and is rounded at the corner, so it doesn't have that boxy look and feel. This gives you a concept of what that looks like from the south elevation. And this, I wanted to point out, is in keeping with the Galleria. You know, the design and the application in front of you actually includes the Galleria Corporate Center. So we're talking about, really, a ten-acre corporate center. So we were charged with designing this to keep in that, not only pedestrian atmosphere, but also in the design and the contemporary look and feel of the Galleria. So as you can see, just from the colonnade at the ground level, you have the benefit of continuing those colonnades, rounding the corner, and having it look and feel from a pedestrian standpoint, as though it is one complex. This gives you a closer look at how that acts, and it also gives you a glimpse at the marquee, the namesake marquee on the Marquee Project. This also gives you a sense of some of those additional step-backs at these, each of these levels. This is the ground-level experience. We anticipate a major art installation above that street level at Scottsdale and Schuman, and this gives you an indication of this. I also, I cannot stress enough, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we are not acting as the DRB this evening. We will go back to the DRB, and we will have, my sense is, more than one meeting, to talk about design, and materials, and structure, and what we can do for the final product of this. But what we are showing you is our concept based upon the development standards that we're asking for relief from, that were already approved by DRB in June. That does not mean that we are locked in to the colors, to the materials. We anticipate there will be a rigorous conversation about that. One of the questions that was referenced was that pedestrian experience. This is looking down Schuman, looking east toward the hotel, the W Hotel. I'll show and exhibit a little bit later. We are giving additional dedication to finish out Schuman Lane. We're also giving additional dedications to finish Scottsdale Road. And what that requires is that we get a little bit closer to both of those roadways. This gives you a very clear before and after, showing that there's no separation with the vehicles, no landscaping, a small sidewalk that's literally dead ends into a staircase going up, and no retail experience or activation. After the fact, it is a much more vibrant use. There's a, obviously, better sidewalk, better pedestrian experience. The same is true of Scottsdale Road. We have a sidewalk that ends nowhere. We have, you know, an overhang, but no activation, no landscaping. That changes, it's an increased experience, both in size and activity, and also in shading. Given my seven seconds, I will talk, I've already mentioned the development standards. I can talk at those at length, but suffice to say, the DRB took a look at those, understood that we were in keeping with the original application, and given the options that staff presented, believed that the best option, and what was ultimately approved unanimously, was the applicant's recommendation. And I'm showing you what those step-backs and the requirements are. What I really want to do is talk about the fact that, using staff's exhibits, we do have that challenge. And, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Serena, you mentioned a break. We did not ask for an amendment to that length standard. We will, in fact, abide by that. There is a break. These are not long, unobstructed elevations. There is either a physical break, there's a separation, there is some change in materials, there is a break along the Schuman and the Scottsdale Road frontage, and the Scottsdale Road frontage is, in fact, rounded. But as you look at both of these elevations in profile, what I will show you are biggest challenges, given that narrow piece, we're still able, Mr. Chair, and thank you for indulging me, I'm just about to the end of this.
About fifteen seconds, if you wouldn't mind.
Not at all. We are still able to provide those step-backs, so it is not a massive square. But our challenge remains that we have an elevator core. And that elevator core, in order to service this building, would create, if we abided by the standards out of the book, unusable spaces within the interior of the building that just could not be leasable, and would take almost a third of floor plates, which is why we asked for those standards. It's why they were approved in 2016, and why we're asking for your approval this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
With that, I will answer any questions you may have, and I also anticipate addressing questions that may come from the public.
Very good, thank you. Any commissioners have any questions before public testimony for the applicant? Commissioner Bolinger?
For two, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Morris, you'd mentioned the Galleria is part of this application. Is it part of the application, or is it just intended to be kind of a transition? I'm not sure, but what the...
Mr.
Are we looking at that south side as a whole, where if you talk about step-backs, the Galleria adds quite a bit of step-back? I mean, eventually, that piece could be sold, and it could, under the type-three, go vertical. But from a commitment, or some kind of design and use standpoint, and more use standpoint, and from amended standards, you're not including the Galleria on the south side of the building as part of the transition?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Bolinger, without sounding too much like a lawyer, yes and no. The application itself includes that property, so it's total of, under ten acres, just under ten acres for the total application. That is in part because of what's necessary in order to achieve the heights. But in, as a practical matter, they are separate projects designed at a separate time. But when, there are some economies of scale, and there are some design considerations that we couldn't pretend it didn't exist, we needed to design in a concept that included, for instance, the colonnades along Scottsdale Road. If we abruptly stopped that, it wouldn't have worked well as one corporate center. We anticipate there will be some synergy of the users of both buildings, and we also have the benefit of the combined parking power of both of those projects.
Is there an anticipated, some higher-level connection between the two buildings, eventually, on that south side?
One of the, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bolinger, one of the things that we've discussed, and staff has reviewed for us, is a better entry and a new entry along Scottsdale Road for the corporate center, the Galleria Corporate Center, because in its original design, it didn't contemplate an access point along Scottsdale Road. So, as you know from the building, and walking that area, and driving that area, one of the things it lacks is an entrance along Scottsdale Road, so that's one of the design features that we're looking at.
But between, between the two projects?
Closer to the project, but it would be a Galleria entrance. But it'd be closer to the building.
But there won't be a second or a third floor, fourth floor?
No, no, connection.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Other questions, comments by commissioners? Commissioner Serena?
I have a couple of questions, but the first, to piggyback on that, expand on this including the Galleria, so if we, expand on exactly what you're talking about, how this is including the Galleria space?
The, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, the application itself includes the Galleria property, because it's part of the underlying property with somewhat common ownership in this instance. So the application, for the purposes of the square footage that was required, and for some of our design considerations, includes the Galleria property. The Galleria property, obviously, is built out, and is not proposing any changes, other than the one I just mentioned, which is, we're contemplating a newer entrance, or adding an additional entrance along Scottsdale Road. So all of the new construction will take place on the, what we refer to as the NUS building, the site that we've just reviewed. But it is part of the overall application.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Serena, just to be real clear, the Galleria portion is not subject to rezoning tonight, and its previous development plan and zoning is not changing. Just the, just the marquee portion, or the old NUS building, is being rezoned tonight. But, like you said, there's a relationship there, and that's, that's, that's going to remain.
So would it be a safe assumption, then, if we're including the Galleria as the overall overlay, even though we're not actually changing any heights or zoning to the Galleria, that it would be fairly easy for the same step-back and step-back standards then to apply, if the applicant ever wanted to come back and say that he already has a quarter-million square feet included in this overlay, and that he wanted to expand that overlay into the gallery at a hundred-and-fifty feet with the identical step-backs and step-backs? Is that a fair assessment? That wouldn't be a hard thing to do, would it?
Mr., I'm not sure if that was for staff, or maybe...
Anybody?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, it would actually be more challenging than that for two reasons. One, the built environment of the Galleria Corporate Center doesn't lend itself to that, and there are actually some, because of the design, as you're aware, it was a retail center, it doesn't lend itself to go up or above. More importantly, it's, in this instance, an overlay that already exists. We're not asking for the overlay. The overlay is already in place, that requires, that permits that height. We are just requesting the amendments to the step-back and the set-back. So I think your, the sense I get of your question is, if you're doing it for this site, wouldn't it then be easy for us to come back and do another application, and ask for the same thing over the Galleria? Physically, that would be very, very difficult, and not conceptually feasible from an economic standpoint. More importantly, we would have to go all the way back through this process.
Right, I understand. So that was based on Commissioner Bolinger's questions, but some of it have to do with the narrow, how narrow the property is. You alluded to step-backs on Scottsdale Road, but I think the narrow of the property is really the north and south side of the property, correct? You had mentioned that there's step-backs, because it's hard to get step-backs, because it's narrow, and then you talked about the step-backs on Scottsdale Road, but the narrowness of the property is really Schuman to the Galleria, correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, yes, that's true, but our challenge on the Scottsdale Road side is the location of the inner core. As you see from the step-backs and the set-backs, I had to rush through it unfortunately toward the end, but the step-backs and set-backs would do two things along Scottsdale Road that are very important. One, it would make the western portion of our floor plates almost unusable, because of that, if you went by the letter of that ordinance on this site. Secondly, it would cut into the parking. You would lose a row of parking, all the way up through four levels of parking, so it would be a significant hit to the parking structure as well. That's why I referenced the Scottsdale Road side.
How are you covering that, under the previous, in the 2015, you had those out, but when the property was acquired originally... the property was acquired originally, it was still intended to be a commercial use, correct?
Yeah.
And without this 150 feet, where would the parking have gone if you had built under the 2015 approval?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, under the 2015 case, the 2016 approval, we asked for precisely the same standards. So, we, we had amended. Our approval included the same standards and the same deviation from those standards and was approved by council with those deviations. The difference being, in 2016, there were two or three levels below grade, so it wouldn't have impacted those parking spaces.
So, you would have had, what did they say, 190,000 feet at that time? Ballpark it?
Correct.
Is that correct? And how many parking stalls did that require at that time?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but we were, we were parked at or above code.
And how, and how many floors above grade were you parking at that time?
It was parked below at grade, so there was a parking level at grade, and then, I believe, one level above, two levels above, I'm getting stage cues.
And so, ballpark, I'm not in the business, how much is a parking stall difference between below grade and above grade?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, an excellent question and gets to the, the heart of this. A below grade space in this instance, because we were just talking about this yet today, the difference is 20,000 plus or minus above grade and closer to the high 30,000 per stall below grade.
So, there's only a $10,000 difference, because I've been told the difference could be as...
About a $17,000 difference, so the low twenties to the high thirties.
Okay, so at 900 stalls, let's cut it in half, I mean, you're, you're talking about the savings by doing this project, if we're getting the same, you're getting a 25% increase in square footage of the office, ballpark it, if we went from 200 to 250. But ultimately, the developer now is going to save close to $20 million by not going below grade and parking, all of this parking above grade with this 150 feet versus the existing. Is that a fair assessment?
I think there's a significant savings, I'm sure your numbers are ballparked.
I'm tuck back the napkin here.
Yeah.
Okay, so what is the, so I think the intent, when we went from, to type three, was that the city receive a significant benefit for this 150 feet. It wasn't just that arbitrarily, the entire area of the type three goes to 150. Aside from an additional 50,000 feet of office and some surface level or ground level retail, is there a, a, do you feel that, where's the, where's the value, I guess from staff's perspective, maybe that's a question for staff, that the city is picking up a significant value add by approving this project since the developer now is going to just build at, at grade or above and not go below grade? Given his savings of 20 million, where's the city picking up a similar value aside from $2 million in added development fees?
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm happy to, typically, Commissioner, I don't know that staff opines on value. I think staff typically has limited themselves to looking at what the appropriate planning is for this in light of the plan.
So, what would be then the benefit for, because we're talking about a significant increase, right? I mean, I understand you're, you're allowed 150, but you're not just asking for 150, you're asking for no step back on Schuman, you're asking for, it's, argue, you can argue it, but virtually no step back on Scottsdale, very, very amended standards, we'll call it. No step back, as far as I can tell, facing east. You're not building any below surface parking, so now the development, the pro forma, it's going to increase by $20 million to the developer. And at this point, I see an additional square footage, we haven't got into the parking issues, I'm just talking dollar, you know, dollars and cents. I think our responsibility is a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens, yours is to your client, and I appreciate that. But if I sit here as my fiduciary responsibility to the city, I need to see a significant increased value to the city to, for me to have the support to get this thing to 150, given how much the developer's asking for out of the city.
Sure. And Mr. Chair, Commissioner, I think I'd start my response to that by saying, you have a duty as a planning commissioner to look at the planning of a property, to look at the land use. Because Scottsdale has a separate DRB, I think you have certainly the right to comment on DRB issues as they would arise.
I'm not doing that, am I?
Right, no, no, but I, I, I think what I'm getting to is, one of the things I would say isn't your purview is to figure out how much a developer may be saving and what the economics of a project are. I think that's certainly something you would do on council, and they look at that bigger scope and scale. I think from a planning commission perspective, it's unusual to look at our pro forma. That being said, it's also easy to look at just the numbers of a parking structure and say, you've saved X number of dollars, what are we getting for it? There are also increased costs. There are increased costs involved in the height of the building, there are increased costs, the, the city of Scottsdale actually made significant changes to their buy-in program. So, you saw the number, the difference between $685,000 and over $2 million just in the buy-in for height or density FAR, that was a significant change. In terms of the experience for a Scottsdale citizen, it is a better project. So, let's talk about the citizen side of that. The citizen side is, the city is getting valuable square footage and dedications to finish Scottsdale Road that they do not have, and the only other way they could get it would be to purchase that from this property owner. They're doing the same thing on, on Schuman Lane, so they are getting valuable work. The applicant has also agreed to complete Schuman Lane, to do a, a complete redo on both sides that they're not obligated to do, that comes as part of this program.
How much does the applicant own of the other side of Schuman Lane?
None. On a lot of portion, on a large portion of it, it is not their building. There's a separate office building. We're literally doing work on right-of-way that's not adjacent to our property. Again, unusual to go through such a economic analysis of a planning project at this stage, but I'll also point out that in addition to the citizen's experience, in terms of being able to create a better right-of-way, a completed street, a sidewalk experience that's covered and all of the things we went through in the actual presentation itself, it's also worth noting that, again, something I would discuss with city council, not necessarily a planning commission argument, but if you are looking at the value to the city and what the gain is, we are providing office opportunities in an area that is lacking those office opportunities. We are allowing existing businesses to expand within the city of Scottsdale that want to stay in this downtown core, and we are also creating an attractive environment for businesses that are not here today to locate within this area. And for every employee we bring in, it is a multiple effect to the city of Scottsdale. Now, we can also talk about the percent to the arts, we can talk about what it does for economic development, we can talk about what it does from a citizen pedestrian experience, we can talk about what we've done from a circulation and traffic experience. Really, the focus of my presentation today for this board has been from a planning perspective, and, and I want to circle back to some of the comments you made about, we're not getting step backs on Schuman, we're not getting step backs on Scottsdale, you actually are.
Can you show this?
Sure. You're getting building massing that changes both on the east-west elevations, there are step backs that are involved virtually at every level. I should also point out, the city of Scottsdale changed the setback requirement in between the two cases. So, it went from 20 feet along Scottsdale Road to 40 feet along Scottsdale Road, but we were still able to come up with a 37-foot step back at that ground plane level to increase that experience. As we go back a little bit further, you can tell what we've done along Scottsdale Road...
Mr. Morris, I just want to make sure, I know we can, there's a lot of topics here, I know we want to, we're going to jump around a lot, but you specifically said step back on Schuman, so I just want to address Schuman right now, then we can come back to the Scottsdale piece.
I'm sorry.
You had mentioned that you have a step back on Schuman Lane, so that's what I'm looking at.
My mistake, I thought you wanted to see Scottsdale Road.
No, you had mentioned Schuman.
I had. Let's see, am I going the right direction? I'll use this, oh, there's a better exhibit from the Schuman Lane. This gives you an indication from the Schuman Lane side, there is a step back both at the top level that's, because this is a nighttime shot, it's a little bit less visible, but there's a step back here, there's a step back at this level, there's a break in the middle of the building and an atrium in the middle of the building, and there's a step back above the pedestrian level along Schuman Lane.
Can you give me, I think staff, maybe it's in staff's presentation, we'll come back to it, but if, maybe you have it, it's the comparison between what the current zoning request and versus what you're asking for, because I saw it was significantly different. You started out at the property line at the second level, and then you go up how many feet? Let's start at the second level, because I know underneath you're, you have the retail with the overhang. Starting at the second level, how far up do you go before you take a step back?
Right after that first level is the initial.
Right, so starting there, you're at the property line, how far up do you go on the property line before you take your first step back on Schuman Lane?
I believe it's about 37 feet is the first, it's about a third of the building. I can get you, I'll tell you what, Commissioner.
If staff can get that, we have some public comments.
And just out of curiosity, are you talking about from what the requirement would be if there was no building on site? Are you talking about the difference between the 2016 approval and the 2019?
Just in general, today, I mean, you, you've made a lot of references to the setback and step backs, and I just want to make sure from, for all intents and purposes, when we had the graph versus what it is, what the code allows for and what you're asking for the amendment, you're, you're asking for basically to move all the way against that amendment for the most part, or, excuse me, all the way against the property line on Schuman. The, the plans that we saw looked that way. So, I'm just trying to get an idea, when you say you have a lot of step backs, the only step backs I see are on Scottsdale, and even then, they're considerably, you have greater, greater vertical reach on Scottsdale than you do versus the current standards. So, we can, staff to get back to it, I don't want, I want public comment, so I don't want to drag this on, we can get back to it. But if staff could get that after public comment, that would be great. The step back versus what the current zoning requires versus what they're asking for.
Anything additional, Commissioner Serena?
No, I think we can go to public comment, come back to it.
Very good. Any other commissioners have any other comments or questions before we go into public testimony? Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Thank you.
We do have, it appears that we have four cards for speakers, so I want to make sure that if anybody does want to speak, that, make sure that you get your comment card in. Our first speaker is Mr. Bob Pejman. If you could state your name and address for the record, and you'll, you'll have three minutes.
Absolutely, how you doing, Chairman Alessio and the commissioner members? I'm Bob Pejman, owner of Pejman Gallery located on 7130 East Main Street. And I would say that any large office building or apartment building will have parking overflow. And the reason it happens is because, let's say you're driving to this building and you don't necessarily going to go park on the on-site, you'll park on the street. And sometimes the public parking is, the, the, the on-site parking is full, forces you on-site. And then I'm not sure if the parking here is paid or not. If it's paid, it's definitely going to push people towards the street parking, which I'm not sure. And it's for this exact reason that a lot of times the city, with a big project like this, they actually increase, or they make an attempt to increase the street parking spaces. That's not the case in this plan, because they're in fact reducing the inventory of the street parking spaces. So, on page seven, it stated that city is reducing the current 44 angled street parking spaces to 26 parallel spots. So, they're removing 18 scarce street parking spaces. And what are we getting in exchange? The city is getting $248,000 for this exchange. So, what's the message here? Pay dollars and we'll remove parking spaces from the street. That's one message. The other message is parking space on the streets for sale if you want to pay for it. But the question is, what does the city do with the dollars that they get, in this case the $248,000? And the purpose is for them to build public parking spaces in the vicinity, but usually this doesn't happen. This money goes into the INLU fund, and then later on, we don't know where they build the parking space. There could be someplace else that doesn't require, that doesn't address this. Example of this, the parking situation in the Arts District. Since the 1970s, there are parking credits sold in the Arts District, but today, we can't even point to the parking structures that were built with these spaces. So, I'm saying that the same thing will happen here in this location. City is just saying, hey, you know what, let's remove spaces and all that, let's not care about overflow, and you're building yourself into a bad situation down the road. Now, COGS, Coalition of Greater Scottsdale, about two months ago, put a request from some high-level senior people in, on staff to ask them for an accounting of parking credits that were sold since the 1970s and what they were used for. Two months later, there's no response. I don't think that they want to come forth with a response. And I think the planning commission should ask or direct staff, whoever they may be, to do an accounting of, since this inception, how many parking credits were sold, to who, and what did they build with that? Once we have all the data, at least we can figure out what went on, okay? So, the other interesting part, the city is basically selling these valuable street-level spaces for 13,000 bucks a piece, but how much does it cost to replicate them somewhere else? Underground, big number, 50,000, above ground, I don't know, 20, 30, but let's not forget about the land cost.
Mr. Pejman, if you could just wrap up here.
That's pretty bad math, and it's, it's poor planning on the staff's part, and we're digging ourselves deeper and deeper into this parking hole. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next speaker is Andrea Alley. Ms. Alley, if you could state your name and address for the record?
Thank you, Chair Alessio and the rest of the commissioners for hearing us today. My name is Andrea Alley. My address is 6828 East Almeria Road in Scottsdale. Bob covered most of the parking issues, so I second a lot of what he said, but I do have a couple of things to add regarding this. Will the owner charge employees of this project for parking as they have with the Galleria? That's caused a lot of employees to park elsewhere in Old Town where it's free. Will the city work with the developer to give the public free access to this parking in off-hours or increase the number of parking spaces required for this project? Or will the city continue to allow developers to continue to place the burden on the public and merchants to accommodate their tenants' parking? This property does sit in an opportunity zone. Every new development in Old Town will. If the owner is going to receive tax breaks for the next 10 years, then they can afford to go below grade with parking by two levels to allow for something that is worthy of our world-class city. This will be one of the first, if not the first, project to reach 150 feet, and so many residents in Scottsdale are very wary of this kind of height, as I'm sure you know. However, this developer will save more over the next 10 years than the cost of the underground parking will ultimately be in the beginning. Secondly, has this project been updated to follow the Old Town Urban Design and Architectural Guidelines that were adopted only two months ago? According to the proposal, the applicant is not required to provide any open space on this project, but it is providing 12,600 square feet. But where? Are you counting the sidewalks as the open space? A happy city, happy employees and happy residents need open space in respite from the fluorescent lit indoors. Concrete sidewalks with a few trees don't count. On paper, it sure looks great, but it shouldn't be so difficult to find in the site plan. One of our primary guidelines is to design buildings that are inviting. This design doesn't seem to create human connectivity. There are no interior courtyards, although I do see the atrium. I see no connection to the inside of the building from the street. What will the city do to enforce these new guidelines? Will we allow these concessions as we foray into building at these heights finally? I'm not mad at anyone wanting to make money for their investment in their work, to be clear, but in this case, I feel that we can do better in many ways. The velocity with which this design reaches 150 feet is concerning. Where are the creative step backs along Schuman, for example, the cut-ins, the greenery that could add visual interest and relief from a 400-foot glass wall? That glass wall is still there despite the atrium. Even with the step backs that have been added since, it still seems very flat, and I feel that the building should be broken up. The argument for upzoning is to build up and allow for more open space, not to cram as much as possible into the upzone. upzone site. How can this design and the parking be reoriented to accommodate the owner's bottom line while maximizing the benefits to the public and the city? Any new development that sits at the gateway to Old Town should live up to its potential. This building will be here for a very long time. Planning commissioners, before you approve this project, dig deeper into the guidelines and look for opportunities for this project to truly represent Scottsdale. I ask the city to help all future developers, including the marquee owners, build something that makes us not regret changing our downtown zoning to allow for a hundred-and-fifty feet in height. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Alley. I appreciate that. There's no doubt that the applicant will address many of those questions during their response, so. Our next speaker is Marilyn Atkinson. Ms. Atkinson, if you could state your name and address for the record, then you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Marilyn Atkinson, and my address is on file. My name is Marilyn Atkinson, and I am president of the Historic Old Town Scottsdale Merchants Association and a member of the COGS Board of Directors. This request for a zoning district map amendment within our downtown overlay has at least four serious issues. One, the existing type-two multi-use zoning at this site was designated during the careful, long-range planning for our downtown overlay. The type-three request, the greater height and increased density is identified for the medical campus and specific hotel locations within the downtown overlay. Two, page six, the applicant states noteworthy investment to provide public benefits, improve the quality of life in the community. We ask specifically, how does this enormous height to a hundred-and-fifty-six feet and a mass building meet those claims? Three, we question the gathering of bonuses for this project at the cost of A, the permanent seventy-two feet of additional building height south of the Arizona Canal; B, the premature removing of the existing forty-four public street parking spaces to be changed to twenty-five parallel spaces, so this project's sidewalk can be extended into Schuman Lane; C, the extremely low payment of thirteen-thousand-eight-hundred per removed space supposedly is deposited into the Phantom Parking Fund that fails to have any publicity about the balance to alleviate an insufficient parking garage in our downtown. It is interesting that when the city states they cannot build for less than thirty-thousand dollars per surface parking space, that we have a developer who is asking for a bonus offering at the bargain basement price of thirteen-thousand-eight-hundred for, per space. Four, if the planning commission sends this case to the city council with a recommendation for approval, then you have established a precedent for our historic downtown as well as the Arts District for the removal of parking to the much-reduced number of parallel spaces. Consider this checklist before you vote. Too tall by seventy-two feet. Too evasive on existing public parking. Too many bogus bonuses. Too in conflict with our long-range type-two, type-one, two, and three designations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atkinson. Then our final speaking card that we have is French Thompson. Mr. Thompson, if you could state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a request. Could you wait to start in three minutes until I've actually given you my name and address? That would be very appreciated.
Well, we'll go ahead and.
My name is French Thompson. My address is seventy-one forty-eight East Main Street. Residencies for over forty years in Scottsdale. This was really an interesting presentation. That's not a very attractive box that they presented. It's got one nice round corner on it. They're trying to take away eighteen parking places from the street. I didn't see anything there that was a redeeming factor. I mean, I've studied art all my life. That's not a building that I would want to have in my neighborhood. Nothing against the architects, because they only get to build boxes anyway. We don't have a Frank Gehry in town that's building something really cool. But I will say one thing that I finally realized, that you guys are our quality control experts, is this how you want to have downtown Scottsdale look? Do you want to just have boxes here? Is that what you want? I mean, Neiman Marcus came in here, and they have quality control people before they have a product that comes in their store. If that product doesn't do well, they get rid of it. You get this building in there, and you've got it there for a lifetime, generations. So you have to be the quality control experts. When people come in and they're going to give you a product, it's your job to do the best thing you can for Scottsdale. And I'd love to see you maximize the return for Scottsdale and not maximize the profit for developers. They were doing a sixty-foot, ninety-foot building, now they get a hundred-and-fifty feet off that thing. They were happy with it before, now they've got that. They should give back more. I mean, you guys should be standing in line to give the best possible product to Scottsdale, make a phenomenal product, so nobody like myself or any of these other speakers has to come up and speak against us. Instead, we should walk up here and say, that's the coolest project I've ever seen. That is an amazing-looking building. You're doing such a good job putting in parking. Nobody's going to have a problem parking there. I was talking to a guy from McKesson the other day. I just happened to run into him, used to work in the Galleria. I said, well, what do you like about the McKesson now? He said, well, what I really miss in downtown are all the restaurants and places I could go to lunch or dinner after work. I said, well, what do you like McKesson now? And he says, we don't have to fight for parking. We got plenty of parking. They didn't have that at the Galleria. They weren't happy at the Galleria. They want to build a really big office building and bring in a lot more people. We have parking issues in Scottsdale. I love the fact you guys can say, we're a little bit above code. Well, code is really bad to start with. So please, be the quality control experts for Scottsdale and bring in the finest stuff you could possibly bring in. And I would like you to talk to the developers and let them know in advance that they need to bring in the best possible project they can bring in too. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Do we have any additional speaker cards? Well, if we don't have any additional speaker cards, then we'll go ahead and close public testimony. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think there is a consistent theme of what we heard from the public, and I don't think any of it is misplaced. I would say, what we're hearing, and this is from the applicant's perspective, there are concerns from the public about the underlying code. There are concerns from the public about the parking designations. There are concerns from the public about the methodologies and the procedures that allows an application like this. And to some degree, we heard what an applicant would typically hear in a design review or Development Review Board hearing about how to best design the building, either where those breaks are, what the architecture looks like, what the finishes of a building are. First and foremost, I would vociferously disagree with characterizations of the architecture. This is an excellent building. This is one of the most exciting buildings that we've been working on over the last year, and there are significant upgrades, not only from the public perspective, but also from the architectural elements themselves. We can talk about where the breaks are. We can talk about where the step backs and setbacks are. I'll reiterate what I said in my presentation about the fact that we are not changing a single amended development standard from our original application two years ago. So anything that was a concern of the ninety-six-foot building is still the same concern, but we haven't exacerbated that. We haven't gone and asked for more than what was already approved on this site. And that leads me to the parking, because we are two speakers who had concerns about the In-Lu parking program. This applicant has paid a significant amount of money into that In-Lu parking program, and we understand the concerns about where that money goes and how it's utilized, and we actually applaud that. We'd support anything that leads to a better understanding and a better utilization of the funds that are available for parking. We did not set the cost of the parking spaces, but let's talk about what's actually occurring on Schuman Lane. What we heard is, there is going, there are going to be net eighteen spaces that are removed from the street when you go from angled-in parking to parallel parking. The rationale for that change is, in fact, the streetscape. It's somewhat, it obviously addresses the building design and where the new property line is after the dedication is made, but we're doing it on both sides of the street to create a pedestrian environment. If you look at the parking in the Entertainment District, for example, it has been converted largely to parallel parking, because it's a better pedestrian environment than head-in parking. So this new design is actually both costly and beneficial, and those eighteen spaces are being paid for, but we're not necessarily looking at the additional spaces. I know one of Ms. Alley's questions were, how many spaces are being created for the public? So in addition to the private parking that's occurring for the office tenants, there are at least fifty retail spaces that will go on for that new streetscape, that will not be pay parking. They will be accessed for that retail experience, either the restaurant or the retail that's being created along Schuman. While we're talking about paying for parking, one of the questions was, is the developer going to charge for parking again? This developer does not charge employees for parking. This developer, like every developer in the city of Scottsdale and Valleywide and Nationwide, as a building owner, when they lease spaces, they will typically charge the tenant for parking spaces. I have no idea whether the individual tenants are charging their employees for parking, and I would think that probably changes from tenant to tenant. What I can tell you is that there's a combination of almost three thousand parking spaces that are being created between the proposed project and the existing Galleria project. It is a wonderful thing to have adequate parking. It is not necessarily a benefit to the city or the developer to overpark a project, because empty parking spaces and empty parking fields don't add to the bottom line of a developer or the vitality of the city. And I have no doubt that it is an easier parking solution on the Indian Reservation. But the idea is not to create low-scale fields of buildings and blacktop for parking downtown. The idea is to create something more exciting, which is what we're doing with this application. We're actually creating an increase, as I mentioned. We are in excess of the overall parking requirement, Mr. Chair, and I'll leave you with this and be happy to answer any questions. We would gladly participate in your review of the parking program. As an applicant, and certainly as an advocate for other developers within the city of Scottsdale, I'll also give whatever time I can to talk about all of the overlays and the ordinance amendments that are considered by this planning commission, whether it's open space, which in this instance, there's a question of where that open space is. There's open space on the east side of the project that is open space. There's also open space at the plaza level. But we are delighted to participate in any of the ordinance changes. What we're asking is, given that we're playing by the rules as they exist today, and that our request is to go from one-approved building and design to a new-approved building and design, don't punish the applicant where we are working within the codes and ordinances of the city of Scottsdale. With that, we would ask you to support both staff support and recommendation, but more specifically, the DRB recommendation unanimously below on this site and approve this recommendation.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
Comments.
Commissioner Kush, and then we'll move to Commissioner.
Comments. First off, I can speak to DRB. I was on DRB when this project was heard. We looked at the setbacks, came to the conclusion that we had absolutely no issues on Schuman, that if you were to try to meet the standards, you wouldn't be able to build a building here, because the site is so narrow, you'd take away a better part of the site with any height by doing that. You'd have elevators that would open and look right at the glass. You wouldn't be able to do an office. So we absolutely had no problems with that. We talked a little bit about maybe a little bit more setback on Scottsdale Road, but agreed that if you're standing right in front of the building, whether it's setback another two or three feet, you're not going to know. The only way you might know if you stood down at Camelback and Scottsdale Road. We thought the elevation of Scottsdale and Camelback Road was, was very nice. I think the applicant's getting beat up here on issues that are not theirs to deal with. I don't think we have any business dealing with the economics of any development unless the city wants to hire an economist and someone expert in building costs to get up there and answer. I've built a lot of things in my career. I just don't think planning commission should be dealing with the economics of this issue. I've really looked at the parking issue big time the last few days. I've had meetings with people, conversations. I personally interviewed forty, I office right in this neighborhood. I personally interviewed forty young people who work at the gallery who are parking off-site, and I've asked them why they're not parking there. Not one of them has said, because they're charging me. No one is charging for parking. I wish we'd stop this rumor. Individuals are not being charged to park, from what I can tell after interviewing literally dozens of people. The problem appears to be that I don't think the building is allocating their parking as well as they should. I believe this building, the gallery, is fairly full. Eighty, ninety percent? It's got a fairly, it's fairly full. I went and walked their parking structure. The top three floors are empty. The bottom floor and a half are empty. There's a ton of parking in the Galleria parking structure. If people took the time and walked it, instead of just hearing, well, I hear they're paying for parking, they'd learn that there is sufficient parking. I think that just the management needs to do a little better job of how they're allocating it. Now, is this building good for the city? Yes. The Galleria, I was amazed. Yelp has eleven, from what I can understand, from what I understand, they have eleven-hundred employees in the Galleria. That's eleven-hundred people who are basically new to Scottsdale, because they were all hired to come into this town. I walked to lunch, and I'll tell you, they all come out of that building lunchtime. They walk to the gallery district. They walk to the restaurants. They're increasing business. So I think this added building will be very good for Scottsdale, because I think it'll add more jobs. Jobs are good. That, people are saying, what's the benefit to Scottsdale? Jobs are a huge benefit. Anyone, any economist will tell you, add jobs, that's good for you. There's your benefit. I think it's a well-designed building. I met with the architect. I criticized him a little bit. I thought they needed to do better renderings. These renderings are excellent, that have shown tonight, so I hear they're listening to that. Somebody mentioned Neiman Marcus. I wouldn't mention Neiman Marcus. I happen to know a lot about Neiman Marcus. That's the worst-performing store in our system. That is not a well-performing store. We're lucky it's still open. And somebody mentioned Frank Gehry. I've been saying for ten years, if Frank Gehry came to Scottsdale, he'd never get through the design process in this city. So, you know, we are, we're very tough on developers. This is going to be a nice bill, and I think it's a benefit to our city, and I certainly support it.
Thank you, Commissioner Kush. Commissioner Faqih?
Thank you, Chair. I just have one quick question to the applicant, and some to staff. Mr. Morris, what's the schedule here? Obviously, two thousand and sixteen, this was zoned, right? I mean, project didn't take place. Now we're talking about zoning it for more square footage. What's the applicant's schedule here? What's their plan, I guess? Do they have a headquarters in place? I mean, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet, you'll assume they have three, four headquarters, you know, like lined up, or is it ready for sale? What's the plan for the building?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Faqih, we will move rapidly. If we're fortunate to get your recommendation of approval and the council's recommendation, there is interest and significant interest in folks who want to both expand and move into this building and new tenants who would like to come into this building. We're at somewhat of a horse-and-cart situation, because we're not able to make commitments, because we haven't gotten through the legislative process yet as to when we can deliver. because we haven't gotten through the legislative process yet as to when we can deliver, but we would estimate if we're fortunate to be able to move into construction drawings immediately after our legislative entitlement and the Design Review Board.
So, this interest just get to be initiated recently when, I mean, was there a zoning case, or, I mean, we, how was the interest in two thousand and sixteen, I guess, or seventeen, which is similar market to now? Is this height helping the interest, I guess, or?
Commissioner, Chairman Commissioner, there are two things that were problematic with two thousand and sixteen. One of those things was the costs involved with building that building, the underground parking. When, and if you'll remember, in two thousand and sixteen, virtually every opportunity that we would come back and try and value engineer the building itself, when we came, because of the time delays in that process, even though we had been able to successfully engineer, the costs had increased every time we went back and did that engineering. So, we virtually missed a window because the building at some point just wasn't feasible based upon the amount of office versus the cost of the underground parking and what the rates could be achieved. The second part of that was, when this new building was designed, we literally had to hold off on talking with potential tenants. Once we recognized that we were going back through the system, a lot of what is driving this design and driving this application is tenant, tenant interest, and we have that today, and that was part of the reason we came back on this site.
Yeah. So, you know, like, first, let me start. I mean, I love the use. I mean, offices is awesome, this property. And I do concur with Commissioner Kush about, you know, he started taking setbacks. This site is very challenging. Now, the biggest thing that I see, and again, this is why I'm asking for schedule, I would love to see this project go through, and I mentioned this earlier in a study session. Yes, we sit here, our purview is to look into the massing, right? But at the same time, you have those two streets over there, and, I mean, the architecture is part of the application, and we're looking at it. And it's a little bit, I mean, for me, again, I'm a civil engineer. I'm not, have the best taste in building, but it's a little bit scary when I look into, I mean, the shape of it, especially with the public art that at the corner. Now, this been said, would love to see the use going forward, but I think there is some challenges that, I mean, I don't know maybe how the other commissioner see, but maybe we could address now or address maybe continuous, or maybe move forward with some comment. But I will, couple of questions. So, we go in, we have two hundred and fifty thousand square feet of office. This is almost two thousand employees. So, I mean, lunchtime show up, let's say forty percent of those people decide to walk across the street. I mean, how we're going to take at this corner, one thousand employees over there? And this was a question about the pedestrian connection. I mean, I don't know if staff has an answer. I mean, we didn't see any hog, we didn't see, I mean, any kind of like connection or maybe more improvement, but what's the staff's plan here? I mean, how is this whole infrastructure is going to take one thousand employee or even five hundred during lunchtime? I mean, outside of the parking, because, I mean, I have my own view of the parking, but mainly, you know, this pedestrian connection.
And, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Faqui, I'll treat some of the comments as a question, just as an opportunity to chime in, and then I'll let staff address what they feel is appropriate. Two things. In terms of our preference as an applicant, what we would like you to do and what you have an opportunity to do as a planning commission this evening is act on the land use this evening. Make a recommendation on the land use itself this evening, and make recommendations in that recommendation, stipulations within that recommendation as to what the focus at DRB needs to include. And I believe at the DRB level, we are likely going to be discussing this in more than one meeting, and will require some significant work on the applicant's part, the engineer's part, and the architect's part, because it is a challenging site. It is so narrow. But I think there's support for the use that we're discussing, as you mentioned. So, that's the first part of it. The second, in terms of how we're addressing the employee count, one of the benefits of this site, and I'll use the Galleria and the existing employee count as an example, there's significantly more employees within the Galleria today than what's being proposed in this building, and there isn't a rush hour at twelve o'clock or concerns about being able to cross Scottsdale Road to the west with that amount of employees today. In fact, I drive this site on almost a daily basis. While I do see a healthy pedestrian count, I never see a situation where you have jaywalking across Scottsdale Road. It is very orderly, and it's very well-maintained with the existing traffic control system. The other benefit to that is that while some people are going westbound on Scottsdale, or west across Scottsdale Road, there are more opportunities east of this site, which is connection by sidewalk and crossing either collector or residential streets, going into the Entertainment District, which is increasingly a lunchtime opportunity. So, if you look at this site and where it sits in the city, and one of the reasons that the ordinance that talked about the overlay encourages height and intensity at this very intersection is because you can find opportunities for lunch or services in virtually every cardinal direction, so there isn't a swarm of people all having to cross one road at one time. It's a long answer, but hopefully.
And I appreciate that. I mean, again, going back, I like the use. I don't want, if you guys have headquarters ready to come to the city and, you know, like, we're talking about setback and maybe leave the architecture to DRB, it's fine. But the biggest thing is as well, I think those are concerned that, I don't know if we'll come back, maybe the future, you know, to look at, but going back to your pedestrian, sometimes it's not easy to cross there if it's not inviting. I mean, you go over, I mean, with this sidewalk you have, you put this in the picture, if I'm sitting in Galleria, I mean, it's not that inviting to go across, to walk over there. And I think what you guys bringing here, an opportunity for a great project, and this pedestrian connection could be definitely part of it. I mean, how, and I mentioned this to you guys during our meeting, I think it makes sense maybe to look into this part, and I know, maybe from now to council or now, or however, staff's seen it as well. So, I don't know if staff has any comment on this, or if they see it differently, or...
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Faqui, are you talking about the pedestrian? I think the Transportation Department took a look at that closely, and knowing that there's signalized intersections, a half a block to the south and basically a half a block to the north, I think they felt comfortable with the pedestrian activity as well as the pedestrians can be dispersed from that location to the east, west, north, and south. So, I don't think that they were too concerned, given the existing infrastructure that's there. At the Schuman-Scottsdale Road intersection, there's a landscape median in the middle of the road. I mean, sure, certainly people can jaywalk, but we're not anticipating that happening with the half a block ease of access to a signalized intersection.
And it's not just about jaywalking. I think you were talking about easing Galleria and additional to this volume. I think staff probably should look, take closely look into this. I mean, when you have a twelve-feet sidewalk, I mean, area twelve by twelve, how many people are you going to fit on it before they cross the street? I mean, something to look at, and probably, you know, something I would like to add to the discussion earlier, comment to DRB or even to the council on how, what's the planned pedestrian connection along this whole intersection, including the Galleria, not just the two hundred and fifty thousand square feet we're doing, especially that you have table outside, you have, I mean, some pots, you have some trash can that's almost in the right way. I don't know if there is any liability to that or not, but something to look at as well. Someone get, I mean, drop in the right way just between private property and public property. I mean, some, something for staff to look at. Another question I have for staff, with what we're doing here right now, I mean, obviously we're setting precedents, similar, I mean, the applicant come in because we have hundred fifty feet in our zoning, and it's done before, and they have the right to do so, but going forward, there's a hundred fifty feet along Scottsdale Road, and with all setback we're trying to do here, how does staff, I don't know if you looked into it, along the whole Scottsdale Road stretch? If we have those rezoning starts happening, is this the city plan, or is this what staff see happening along Scottsdale Road? Bunch of hundred fifty feet building, how, what's the plan for it?
Chair Lassio and Commissioner Faqui, obviously, the Old Town Plan had been updated for the type-three provisions, and that would allow conversations of up to a hundred and fifty feet, but each case is going to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis, so it's something that we have to look at one step at a time. But the downtown plan does support the concept of those taller buildings at those locations, but there's no guarantee that every location will get approved at a hundred and fifty feet.
Do we have some similar application right now along Scottsdale Road with a hundred fifty feet? Like a similar application, a similar project and the work?
The, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Faqui, the, we have something similar, although that's still being refined regarding the master plan for South Bridge Two, across the street from Scottsdale Road.
And then, the last comment I have, and again, those are concern that, I'm not going to be the one stopping the project tonight, but it depends what other commissioners do. Public art, I mean, I'm looking at the best piece of this colorful, so you have a building that look really kind of like, I mean, white and metal, and suddenly have this really nice yellow that show up at public art for five hundred thousand dollars. And I'm remodeling my home right now, and I know how much construction costs. I mean, five hundred thousand dollars doesn't do much to make this nice building pretty, I mean, and the presentation so far in the application that this is a piece that's going to make this building special. I don't know, five hundred thousand, it will be even close to get this building special. So, I don't know what your plan for this part of it, I guess.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Faqui, fortunately, we have members of the Gallery Association who I'm sure can direct us as to what we can do with some of those funds, but I should make clear, that five hundred thousand dollars is the minimum that would be submitted to the city for the one percent for the arts. That is not our art budget and the improvement budget for the aesthetics of the building itself. That is just one piece of that. It's very likely that we will ask that those funds be directed to use in the area or on the building itself, but that won't be the totality, because you're right, that's probably an underestimation of what art would cost.
And if this happened, I'm assuming this element by itself would be a separate application through DRB and through the Art Board as well, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, this is all that I have, I guess. Again, I love the use, just those items that I feel like, I wish we have more time to look into the massing of it, the connectivity, but again, we don't want to be, I mean, stopping a headquarters coming in. I don't know if the case or not, but I'll leave it up to the other commissioner. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Serena, you've been waiting patiently.
Yeah. First, I mean, I don't want my comments to be misrepresented. I love the use. I think type-A office here makes sense. I think that anybody that spoke would agree that the type-A office for this, abiding the Galleria, makes perfect sense. But the building going there is going to be there, the Galleria was built in nineteen eighty, right? So, we're talking about thirty years, and there's no anticipation of the Galleria changing anytime soon, per the conversation we had earlier.
Eighty-seven, but yes.
Okay, it's eighty-seven. So, but it's not moving. So, this building's not going to move either. So, I like the use, but I think that's why it's so important that we do get it right, because I think there is a precedent factor. I think that this is really a gateway to the downtown. One comment I just wanted to address, so in our application, number three, Part A, specifically to both your comments about our purview, the criteria to achieve bonuses, the proposed development plan reflects noteworthy investments to provide public benefits, improve the quality of life in the community, and assist in achieving the goals and policies of the general plan, the downtown plan, and city objectives. So, I think it's a fair question to ask what the added benefit, you made some comments that you're not asking for anything additionally versus what was approved in two thousand and sixteen, except a fifty percent increase in height of the building. So, you are asking for something pretty significant, fifty feet on top of the building, and I would say, given the original was ninety, I mean, sixty, actually, so, but we can get through all that. I don't want to keep it here till midnight. The last thing on the parking, so this is the main thing, this is a Galleria overlay project that we discussed earlier, was, so, I was on the city site, reading the, reading the application, trying to dig into more on this parking issue. Was there a reason that the, this two thousand and fifteen Walker Parking Consultant report that I found on the city's website was not included in our, in the application or in the city's report? Because I had some things in here that jumped out at me, and before I address them, I want to make sure that there's not a specific reason I shouldn't be looking at it.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, not that I'm aware of. So, do you ever have those dreams, Commissioner, where you show up for school and you have to take a test?
I get it. I'm in school, right?
That you want prepared for.
I get it.
So, I'm not quite familiar with that study.
So, City of Scottsdale, cityofscottsdale.gov, so I found it there. Walker Parking Consultant, call it two thousand and sixteen, it was right at the end. The first thing that jumped out at me when I get it, I wasn't going to go through all hundred and some pages, until the table of contents highlighted special demand generators, the only two special demand generators in this parking report, were the Galleria Corporate Center and Downtown Special Events. So, I thought maybe I should dig into it, because we can talk about the art gallery, parking, different areas, but I think this is pretty specific. So, the city's hired consultant three and a half years ago at this point, some of these bullet points, I won't go through all of them because we're getting out on time. The crux of it, page forty-two of the report, said that the Galleria is underparked by nineteen hundred and eighty-one stalls, per the current use of the Galleria and the office. So, how the offices are being used today are much different than how the offices were used five years ago, maybe my office, where everybody has an office suite with some of the cubes. The Galleria is a tech center, a lot of, I'm not, maybe a long tables, a lot of call people on them. However it's used, there's more intensity. I don't want to get into the subjectivity of it, but that's the city's report, said we were underparked by nineteen hundred and eighty stalls. In addition, it said the parking needs, I'm reading verbatim, "The parking needs generated on site are greater than the available supply of parking. As a result, some of the tenants have entered into parking arrangements for overflow spaces throughout the downtown, including stalls at the library garage and informally Fashion Square Mall Garage adjacent to Nordstrom's." I know there was an add-on to that parking garage, the Galleria. This report, per the city's .gov website, however, even with the vertical expansion of the garage, we anticipate that that property is still significantly underparked. I know Commissioner Kush mentioned that he walked through the garage and that it was half-full. They also did a report, page forty-four, they walked through from February to April to see how full the parking garage was. Their occupancy at that garage, when they did this report with these feelings, were loading around ninety percent, eighty-eight, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-nine, eighty-eight. So, it was being used. It wasn't an underused garage at the time. So, I just have a question that when we're talking about parking, it continues to be a conversation about this property. So, we're talking about things that I was told I shouldn't pay attention to that are right here in Part Three, Section A, that I should pay attention to, which is the public benefit, that parking is resolved when, three and a half years ago, I was told the Galleria, which apparently, unless I'm misunderstanding, the parking stalls are matching the per-square foot of the Galleria. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
The parking stalls for this project, per square foot of office space, are matching that of the Galleria, plus or minus maybe a couple percent. Is that correct?
The same ratio.
The same ratio. So, at that same ratio, given that the overlay is going to allow the same use, I would anticipate that this concern of underparking is going to increase significantly as well. So, again, I'm not one to hold up projects. I agree with Commissioner Faqui that the use is there, but I think when you look at the step-back issues, this parking issue that is not subjective, it's a city report three and a half years ago, and unless something significantly changed, I don't see a difference.
There has been a significant change.
There has.
But I'll let you finish.
So, let's hear, I want to hear the difference, though, because this...
Well, I don't want to interrupt your flow, Commissioner. You may have other questions.
Nope. Go ahead.
Okay. First of all, I would take exception to the number, because I'm not quite sure how they quantified what they believed was the demand, considering there hasn't been any excess square footage developed in the Galleria, but there has been a significant change to the usage of the Galleria. Two things have been changed, which are significant. One, as you mentioned, there was an additional construction site on the parking deck, two additional levels of parking have been created in the garage that serves the Galleria. The second part of that, while we've added spaces, we have decreased demand. Even the report that you were citing, and it doesn't jive, at least from what I'm hearing, that you would have a parking deficit of almost two thousand spaces, which, given the number, that's the totality of the spaces in the Galleria. So, what that report says at face value is, you would have to double the amount of parking that currently exists within the Galleria to match demand, and at the same time, when they checked demand, then they saw it in the high eighty percent, ninety percent of occupancy. That doesn't make sense to me. But more importantly, the largest single parking demand was McKesson. McKesson did have a very open bullpen use, call center use, that utilized employees per square foot in a much higher ratio than what we have today. That use, because it couldn't be easily accommodated, ultimately moved... moved to a architectural and design that works for them, back office on the engine reservation. That decreased the need and demand and the parking structures for the Galleria significantly. So, that, those two items have been the single, the two changes that would be most significant from what you're reading.
Okay. So, first of all, the, the expansion of the garage, I know I was throwing a lot at you, but the report did say, however, even the vertical expansion of the garage, we anticipate that the property is still significantly underparked. So, that was included in their report. So, you know, we can go into the specifics. It sounds like you haven't seen it, maybe, you know, given it's on the city's website, it's the only carve-out, aside from special use, is the Galleria. Given that this is a Galleria overlay, maybe something that you should take a look at and we should include. So, I would agree with Commissioner Faqui, if there's no other comments. But I'm happy to give some kind of continuance to this. I just think that there are a lot of issues that need to be resolved, given I have concerns about the step-back on Scottsdale, Schuman, a little bit. Staff, we can talk about later, it's getting late on the, the step-backs on Schuman. But then, the city's own parking study on the Galleria showing a significant underpark. I mean, not, not a couple stalls, right? I mean, 2,000 stalls, basically. So, that's a big concern for me. So, unless there's other questions, and I'm guessing, looking down, maybe not, but if not, I'll be happy to make a continuance motion. And if, if we can't get a continuance, I'm not comfortable with where we're at currently, with the current case in front of us. So, I don't want to just blow it up. You guys have had a lot of work through this. I'm happy to give you time to work back through it and make some improvements. But that's kind of where, where I stand. So, I'll give it back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Mr. Chair. Our preference as the applicant would be to move forward with the recommendation this evening. The two items that are being referenced, both parking is a citywide issue, but certainly one that we're not exacerbating with this application. We're actually increasing the amount of parking available and are beyond your current code. Secondly, in terms of design, we will have a full and fair opportunity to do that design at your development review board. But the step-backs and setbacks that were reviewed, were reviewed specifically by the DRB and recommended unanimously, and that recommendation still stands before you. I, I'm happy to take any comments, so that as we come back to the DRB, we can address design issues, which I really think we're talking about tonight.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Serena. Is there any other comments or questions? We do have a couple more thoughts by-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Bolinger, sure.
I'm looking at it a little bit more from our beginning, comment about the Galleria being a 10-acre parcel. We're not rezoning that piece, but at the same time, we're talking about it, and it's being used as a, an added-on benefit to the whole corporate center. I'm looking at that as a future use, and in a statement that says this is what the corner's going to stay. Architecturally, obviously, it's 30 years old, plus, and it does have a little bit of tie-in with what's been proposed, column spacing. I, I would like to see if there is going to be an entrance placed on Scottsdale Road in the Galleria side, a little bit more tie-in with the project, color, and I'm diving back to my DRB days. But looking at the future use, and if you add the Galleria kind of hypothetically to the whole overall discussion of setbacks and step-backs, I believe the whole case then turns itself around. It's a lot more of a step-back and, and height reduction, if you balance the two. And that's somewhat conceptual, obviously. It's not focused just on this application, but looking at it as a, as a, a center has been discussed. I, I see that as a benefit. How it holds, whether it got split, got rezoned and redesigned, that's another discussion for a different day. But I, I'm still, I'm feeling pretty good about it. The parking issue, it was a, it was a call center. I've done call centers, we've all dealt with them. It's, it's 10x the parking. And so, if that's not part of this application, it hasn't been discussed, the gallery has been redone, it's a different parking environment. I'm not sure what the, the ratios are, offhand, of four per thousand or five per thousand, what the numbers are that you're using. Obviously, it meets code because staff's cleared that part of it. So, in the future, if there were a call center, a mass call center like McKesson had in there to, to some extent, you'd have some issues with parking. At, at this point, with 3,000 parking spaces and whatever the total square footage is, the public discussion can be had at a later date with council, and how it gets shared with, with, with the public and, and the whole parking discussion that Mr. Morris agreed to participate in. I think it's a good thing. Those were my thoughts. I'm done.
Very good. Thank you. Any other additional comments, questions? Commissioner Kush, I see your finger on the, the button. You're, so you're looking for a motion. Any other comments, questions?
I'd like to make a motion.
Before we move to a motion at all, any other discussion?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman. Move to make a recommendation to City Council for approval of Case 7ZN 2015 Number Two, per the staff recommended stipulations after determining that the PBD findings have been met, and the proposed zoning district amendment, development plan, and development standards are consistent and conform with the adopted general plan.
Very good. We have a motion by Commissioner Kush. Do we have a second? We have a second by Commissioner Bolinger. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Oh, sorry.
Before we vote, Chair, can I have just one question or comment?
No, there's a motion on the table.
Well, you can change the motion if we, if you want. Just a question.
Not after a motion, second.
Can I make a comment on the motion?
We'll allow one comment on the motion, and then we need to do our vote.
Okay. Thank you. So, as far as the motion, going back to the discussion we have here earlier about parking, you know, some of the design and some of the pedestrian connection, for us as a board, are we going to be able to comment on this again, or even able to see it, or is it going to be just some comment that get to be in the report for council and DRB? So, is there an opportunity for us, at least, to get another opportunity, even in a way, maybe a study session, or to kind of like address some of those concerns that we brought up today, or is it going to be just at DRB level? Can the motion be amended, I guess, for it to come back for us, to give us like, I mean, an update on what the design changed?
Mr. Curtis, I don't know if that's a-
No, motion has been made. Roberts Rules of Orders, motion's been made, it's been seconded.
Understood. We, we're having-
You can turn down the motion and make a new motion, but-
Ms. Curtis, do you have a comment on the question? Legal counsel?
Yes. Chair and Commissioners, there, there is a motion on the table with a second.
Very good. Then we will move forward with the motion. Obviously, the council has advised us that we need to finish up with the motion, Mr. Faqui, Commissioner Faqui. So, again, we have a motion on the table with a second. All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye? opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes, if I, if I heard correctly, four to two?
Yeah.
Is that a correct count? Okay. Motion passes four to two.
I want to get you a copy of Robert's Rules of Order.
You can always amend the motion if you want.
Mr. Curtis, anything additional on the agenda tonight?
No, Mr. Chairman, that's it.
Very good. And that's for a motion for adjournment? A motion by Commissioner Smith? We have a second?
Second, second.
Second by Commissioner Bolinger. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll be on DRB.
You could always amend the motion.
Guys, are we a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you.